Good evening. It being honored about 7:00 PM, the Foxborough Planning Board will come to order. This is going to be our first evening where we're actually going to be participating with people on Zoom because we have a public hearing, so I just need to read something into the record. Good evening. This open meeting of the Foxborough Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet remotely so long as a reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live on Foxborough Cable Access and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that anything you broadcast may be captured by recording. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. As we get into the public hearing phase of this evening's meetings, I'll read some other basic ground rules, but prior to that, we can just go through some agenda items. First one is Planner's Report. Paige, do you have anything this evening?
Yes. I have a short one I didn't print when I was in college. Basically, we've been focused on two main tasks. One is temporary outdoor dining. This board was very involved in getting those regulations approved last week, and we've been busy processing applications. To be clear, anybody, any restaurant that already had outdoor dining, if they were not proposing to expand their outdoor dining, they were allowed to open on June 8th. So, the list I give doesn't necessarily mean, it isn't comprehensive just because we might not know the restaurants that were allowed to open without permission. The ones that we're dealing with are those that are seeking to expand the amount or the area of seating or space outside, and some of it is being done, you know, in lawn areas or parking lots and whatnot. So, we have been fast and furiously working on this. So far, we have issued temporary outdoor dining permits to Cavallino, Conrad's Six String, The 99 Restaurant, Skip Jack's, and Foxborough Country Club. We have pending, we have Jake and Joe's, Rally Point. Now, I should, but they're also an expansion, so they are open. Same with Conrad's, those are already open. And the Commons did contact us. We're working with our DPW to start talking about how we could accommodate some sidewalk dining for the Commons, and hopefully even Sam's Place. We dropped off the paperwork to him as well. And then just after, this afternoon, we received expanded requests from Capriatis. And as you know, Union Straw is working on a permanent patio, but we are also trying to work with them under the temporary guidelines just to ensure they can get their liquor license. Under the flexible dining guidelines issued by the state, under this COVID thing, there is a provision where the town manager and the Board of Selectmen can permit outdoor dining. So, we wanted them to, we're going to try to overlay some temporary provisions onto the permanent so that they can open before there's a public hearing. So, stay tuned for that. Hopefully, more and more restaurants will be interested in doing this, and I think the residents are thrilled to be able to go outside again and walk around, and so that's been exciting. It's, you know, in the planning department, our role in the active COVID emergency wasn't much except providing some support, and now it's been kind of nice to be able to participate in helping the community, and not just the businesses, but I know that the residents are dying to get out and dine and to support their local restaurants, so it's been great. And then our other big project has been our housing production plan. We've had a couple of meetings since we last talked. We had a housing coalition meeting, and we've had a housing working group meeting. So, the latest on that now is we are prepared to start presenting to the public possible strategies for consideration and also possible locations. So, at the end of this month, in light of the COVID crisis, we're doing things differently. Traditionally, we'd hold a public forum probably around this time before the end of the month. We'd be holding a forum. We'd hope to get, you know, 100 people, if we're lucky, into a meeting room to look at this and do a presentation for about 90 minutes. We want to reinvent that now, so we're now going to be coming up with a little bit of an innovative approach where we might have, I think we're going to have snippets in the sense of you won't be bogged down for 90 minutes watching a webinar. It would be more like you'd watch a little video or get some information on a certain strategy, and then there might even be a survey at the end of it, like, what did you think about that? So, you could almost pick it up and drop it off as you went. So, and it'll be, it'll be open for a couple of weeks. That way, people can watch it at their leisure and go back and forth. So, we're hoping to get some good turnout. On our virtual open house for this project, we got several hundred completed surveys, so we felt that that virtual, while we had a lot of success in the in-person one, our most successful was 60 people, whereas in the virtual, we had over 200. So, you know, it is learning a new way. It's very different, but sometimes we can reach more people other ways, so we're trying to adapt to that. So, stay tuned. I'm also working with Foxborough Cable Access, and I believe it's June 29th. I'll be making a video with Jared Craig over there, so we'll be having some sort of information that we'll be presenting to the public, just trying to make this information more accessible to everybody. So, stay tuned, stay informed, and the main point I made on that is why does this matter? And the reason this matters is this housing production plan is going to be the basis for future policy. So, much like as we've gone through the uptown development, one of the concerns the neighbors have had, if you recall, is that they didn't, when the zoning changed, you know, back in 2013, they didn't realize what that meant to them. And so, that was all offshoot out of the downtown strategy and the master plan. So, this housing production plan will likely lead to possible zoning amendments. So, that's why this is so important, get input in early, because the input guides what this board will recommend moving forward. So, input is, and investment in time is important on this. I mean, I'm honestly a little sick of housing, I'll admit that, but having a lot of fun doing with the restaurants. I said that to Ron the other day, and I mean, we've been living and breathing housing for a while now. I get it, but it also is super important because it's going to inform us as we move forward on, you know, policy decisions and so. And there was a letter to the editor and the Foxborough Reporter today that was signed by about 25 people, so there is an active housing coalition. Really, you know, I know a lot of folks watching this probably are all set for housing, but there's a lot of people in Foxborough that aren't, and there is started to be an increased voice on that. So, we're trying to find ways to not change the character of the community, but all the way maybe meets the needs of some of our residents, so. So, please stay tuned. I know it's sometimes dry. If you can't sleep, it's a great thing to do to pick up whatever webinar we have, pop it on, and if we lull you to sleep with our information, that's okay. So, and that's pretty much all I have right now.
Very good. Thank you. And action items, were there, there were some minutes?
The May 14th minutes have been reviewed. The May 28th, they just sent out today, so. We can do May 14th.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from May 14th with any amendments.
Second now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any active subdivisions, Kevin?
I don't know. Are there any active subdivisions, Tracy?
I don't know. Let's ask Gabby. Gabby?
Not at this point. It's just the construction going on. We haven't had any complaints or any concerns.
What's going on with Lawson Farm? I saw their name in the newspaper today.
Didn't see it in the paper yet.
Is there anything going on down there that we should be aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
What did you see in the newspaper? Taxes owed, overdue, several lots.
I'll have to look.
It's been a little slow selling houses there.
They've got some people already living there.
Yeah, they do.
Any else we can cover in the next few minutes before public hearings?
Oh, me? I'm sorry.
For you, Gabby, Diana, anybody who has something to bring up, because the hearings aren't going to start until 7:15.
Oh, I should get, hold on, we should let Eminda Davis in here.
Thank you.
We could talk about the meeting, actually, the next meeting.
Okay.
So, Gabby sent out a meeting, a notification that we can't meet at the next meeting on June 25th, so we're trying to find the next date of our meeting. The next scheduled date would be June, July 9th. Gary cannot attend that meeting.
I'll be, I'll be in OB.
I know. I'll be visiting, no. So, we, we can't, we could meet that night. We know that the Kingswood Crossing, we could not move forward without Gary, so we know that would have to go to the following meeting if that were the case. I don't know. That's really, then we have a couple parking lot hearings, but we, those will not, nothing will lapse because we're in a state of emergency, so permits aren't lapsing, so we do have the ability. Did you guys inform the Craft Group and the others that that might be a possibility, that we wouldn't be meeting in June?
I have not talked to Mike Say or Brian Holm, but the Craft Group, they're fine.
Yeah, good, okay, because they'd be the ones who might worry. So, so I guess the option is, do we want to try for July 9th, or do we want to push off till July 23rd?
I don't know, do we?
I think we do.
What's that?
I think we do. We're talking about two different things.
They're informing me about something they'd like to address. Why don't we bring it up then?
Well, yeah, the question was, given the recent election, and congratulations to Jeff and to Gary, and to John for coming along with us as an associate member.
Thanks for pitching in.
Do we need to do a vote, like the other boards did post-election, on Chairman, Vice Chairman, Clerk?
I'm happy to entertain any motion anyone would like to make.
I'm making nomination for Kevin Weinfeld for Chair.
I'll second that.
I guess I stepped backward. So, very good. I'll accept. Thank you. You need a vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll nominate Ron Russell for Vice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess.
Thank you very much, you guess.
So, John was the clerk before.
John was the clerk before.
What does the clerk do, the minutes?
Yeah.
I'll nominate Tracy for Clerk.
I think that's an outstanding recommendation. I'll second that.
You're lucky we're being filmed.
All in favor? Aye.
Now, you have to attend.
Kevin, Mr. Chair, just one thing I'd bring up. I did not respond to the email relative to the three dates in Gabby's email for future meetings, and I do not have any conflicts.
Okay.
So, if there is a need for me to be here, I can be here for those meetings.
Okay. Very good.
I think the bottom line is, do you want to meet once in July or twice? In realistic times, we probably only meet once, even though we schedule twice, it just tends to work out, because we probably will want to meet on the 23rd regardless. So, then the question is, do you want to meet on the 9th and the 23rd, or do you just want to do the 23rd?
Well, do you, I mean, do you think that if the 9th is just going to be a shorty for like small things like what we're about to embark on, then maybe it's really not necessary, unless you think that there's something else we're going to need to continue from tonight or somewhere?
I can't really think, I don't think it's, I don't think there's anything pressing, is there? Need to hold a whole meeting on July 9th for no reason.
So, no meeting on July 9th?
Sometimes there's obligatory timeframes.
Right.
You know, somebody could walk in with an application, and that would trigger you to have to hold that meeting.
I think that's been waived because of the state of emergency.
Yeah.
Okay. If that's waived, then we're free and clear.
Honestly, right now, if we have meetings, we've got to get these guys in.
Yeah, it's not as easy as normal.
Right.
Okay, so July 9th, we're not meeting.
Was it the 25th?
23rd.
23rd?
July 23rd.
Okay.
And then obviously, if we have to have an emergency, if something comes up, we'll try to rally the troops, but, you know.
All right. Very good. It being sometime around 7:15, we are going to begin a public hearing, so let me just read some ground rules for this evening. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of Planning Board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. After the Board members have concluded their comments, I will open the meeting for questions from the public. If you wish to provide input or speak when I ask for public comment on a matter, you have two options to do so. You may use the Raise Your Hands tool at the bottom of the screen. On Windows, you can also use the Alt+Y keyboard shortcut to raise or lower your hand. On a Mac, you can also use the Option+Y keyboard shortcut to raise or lower your hand. On a phone, raise your hand by pressing *9, or enter a question in the question and answer screen for the meeting. You can either choose to have staff ask your question, or make your comment, or wait for permission to speak, and then speak up once unmuted. Please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you, and state your name and address before speaking. Please speak only for two minutes or less. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If you do not want to speak, you may note this in the question and answer section and ask staff to read your question or comment. Staff will likely ask you for your name and address while managing access to the public speaking portion of the meeting. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Please be patient with us as we all adapt to this new technology, and thank you to Mike Weber and his team at Foxborough Cable Access. They have really stepped up for all of us. We do appreciate it, Mike. That being said, first public hearing is for a special permit temporary parking lot renewal 200 North Street for Cal and Ellen Davis.
They might be on the line.
Yes, they are.
Yes, we are.
Good, thank you.
Hi, Ellen, we can hear you.
Cal is here as well.
Very good. So, can I presume from each or the two of you that there have been no changes per se to your lot this year?
No changes.
Cal or Ellen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, no changes.
No changes. Okay.
So, just for the folks at home, we might want to clarify that this is a temporary parking lot application associated with stating of events. It's for 200 North Street. I believe the Davises are the one property there that are still in the S1 district. Is that, or are they grandfathered?
They're grandfathered.
They're grandfathered, so that's why they're our North Street folks. They've been doing this for years, and apparently the plan is proposed is the one that's been, they've been doing for years.
Right. They're applying for renewal of a lot with 46 parking spaces. They are very familiar with all the regulations regarding lighting, trash receptacles, portable toilet provided, you know, et cetera.
Thank you.
No parked vehicles are ever blocked there, and they supervise the lot before and after. The lot is fully fenced, except for the North Street frontage to provide a butter privacy. They have one residential butter at 196 North Street, and the Foxborough Terminal is about the remaining perimeter of their property. Any questions or comments from anybody on the board?
It's, just to clarify with the plan that we have, it says, "Original permit allowed 28 parking stalls, proposed adding 18 new parking stalls for a new total of 46." Is that old?
It's dated 16.
2016.
Okay. Thank you.
I see no problem with it, Kevin. Anybody else?
I'm fine with it, Kevin, as well.
Just got curious, what would be the anticipated volume?
Of use in this football season? I'm thinking that this is kind of a proceed at your own risk type situation. I'm certain it is. I mean, this used to be an annual event where every year the applicants had to come, and then a couple of years ago, we made a change. So, it happens every three years now?
Three years.
Yeah, three years. So, I'm sure that the Davises and the other applicants that we'll be reviewing this evening are very aware of the current, you know, condition of sports in general, and the Patriots in particular, and, you know, I don't think that their plans are to provide their parking lot unless there's a reason for attendance. So.
Mr. Chairman, the plans for the three parking lots that we'll be reviewing tonight were reviewed by the department heads. You have comments in your packets, but they were no concerns. The only real comment was from the Health Director that they need to post signage to the porta-johns and have appropriate waste barrels on the sites.
Which they do show. Anything else from anybody? Any, we don't have any comments from the public? Gab?
No.
We don't see anything.
Anything else you'd like to say, Cal or Ellen?
No.
We're going to approve the, close the hearing first. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Make a motion.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the special permit temporary parking lot renewal at 200 North Street for Cal and Ellen Davis.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, do you have to do a roll call?
Thank you, Ellen and Cal.
Thank you. Have a good season.
Thank you. We hope there's parking.
Yeah, have a good season.
Take care.
As long as there is one, yes. It being slightly past 7:20 PM, we have another public hearing, special permit temporary parking lot renewal at 16 Washington Street LLC.
You're going to travel.
Good evening.
I'm everybody.
Mr. Stanton is here to represent himself and his parking lot. Anything you'd like to enlighten us about?
Are these going to be three years again?
Yes.
Mike, I think you have to move up to the microphone so they can hear you.
That's a beanie direction right there.
Yes.
That will do. So, yes, we will be, they will be every three years. Anything else? So, no changes on the lot? Everything's the same as usual?
Yes.
Very good. Our butters were notified. I don't see any commentary from any other boards. Was there any?
The comments that you have are for all three lots.
All three.
So, they're the same, yes.
Signage for porta-potties, trash bins, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. Any further questions or comments from anybody on the board?
Nope. Just thank you for coming, Mike, to clarify this stuff for us.
Never be said I didn't do the least I could.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
He just wanted a night out.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good seeing you all.
We're closing the hearing, play, you know. If you leave too quickly, we could just deny you.
Oh, is there a closer hearing?
Yeah. We already did that.
How do you close with a microphone?
Motion to approve temporary parking at 16 Washington Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No, everyone. Thank you. You can still have a good evening.
Thanks for attending.
Take care, Mike. Good seeing you.
All right.
Hi, nice to see you. So nice to see a human.
And finally, it's now 7:25 PM. We have one more public hearing for special permit temporary parking lot renewal 96 Washington Street GOT LLC. Is there any here? Anyone here?
Yeah, you can pull the chair. Just sit in front of one of the mics, yeah.
So, it appears that your application is the same as it has been for the last number of years.
Right, there's no changes proposed.
Okay.
We have not received any complaints, any letters about this lot.
Very good. And well, again, this is a family that's been doing this lot for many years. They're very well aware of all the rules and regulations.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the board?
And this is the Red Fox lot?
Yes.
And has there been a commercial parking operation up there currently or recently?
For something other than this, you mean?
Yes.
I don't know. I'm not aware of it.
You're not aware?
It just seemed, I was wondering if there were parking from Enterprise or across the street or something like that.
I don't know. Have you witnessed? Something that made you want to think about that?
Yeah, but I really, you know, I'm not suggesting that.
Yes.
You know, pertinent to this matter, but it's something that I have observed.
Okay. Well, maybe we should look at that. This is a point of information.
I think.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do I hear a motion to approve the permit?
Motion to approve the temporary parking permit for 96 Washington Street.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, it being almost 7:30, just give us another couple of minutes and we'll move along.
Are you looking at the back of your head?
I know, like, shoot.
Don't, don't look at the screen.
What, you're turning into your father, what?
So, before we, before we start the public hearing, I don't know if Mr. Lynch and Mr. Buckley went out in the hallway, heard the document that I read about how we're going to conduct this meeting. It's going to be a little bit different than normal because there are people out there potentially who will be attending via Zoom, so we've made arrangements for them to have the opportunity, once we hear your presentation, go through the usual thing with the board, for each and every one of us to comment or ask questions about things. At that point, we will open it up to people who are attending virtually. They can either raise their hand virtually, and Gabby or Paige can recognize them, they can verbally ask a question or make a comment, or they have the right to just submit it and ask one of them to read in their question or comment into the record. We'll do our best, all of us, to answer whatever they have. Once that's done, you know, if there's anything else that needs to happen, then we'll deal with it on a case-by-case basis. If there's any voting or anything else that needs to happen this evening or any other, for any other permits like yours, we will do that by a roll call vote.
Kevin, do you have the letter from Heather Harding handy?
The last page in your jacket.
Good to see you.
Oh, well.
I could have done your hair.
Price was right.
Who did it? You?
My wife.
Thank you, sir.
She used to do mine, too. No longer.
She felt she was missing out. Hold on. Somebody's got to click yes, whoever has control.
I'm over here clicking, yes, yes.
Who answered the question?
Now, Bill Buckley tried to get, go into the presentation, so he can show it on the screen, so who's ever got ownership, there we go, needs to click yes, so he can share.
There we go.
So, Kevin, when you start, you might want to at least do like a Cliff Notes version of the, what you just said, just because I don't know if anybody's tuning in at 7:30.
Tuning in at this point.
I don't think you need to read the whole thing, but maybe just the Raise Your Hand
So, if, for those who are attending this meeting this evening via some type of virtual, then Google, Zoom, et cetera. Because of, because of that and because of the conditions we're under because of COVID-19, we're going to have, you'll have the ability to hear and see everything that's available based on presentations of anybody who's here for a special permit application or public hearing. We will introduce the speaker, let them, let them deal with their thing on the agenda, make their presentation. After that, everyone will, on the board, will have an opportunity to comment or question. Once we're past that section, anyone in the public who would like to comment on the matter or question, you have two options to do so. You may use the raise your hand tool at the bottom of the screen. A tip for Windows is you can use the Alt plus Y keyboard shortcut to raise or lower your hand. On a Mac, you can also use the Option plus Key Y keyboard shortcut to raise or lower your hand. On a phone, raise your hand by pressing star nine. Or enter a question in the question and answer screen for the meeting. You can either choose to have staff ask your question or make your comment, or wait for permission to speak and then speak up once unmuted. Please wait until the chair, that's me, yields the floor to you and state your name and address before speaking. Please speak only for two minutes or less. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If you don't, if you do not want to speak, you may note this in the question and answer section and ask the staff to read your question or comment. Staff will likely ask for your name and address while managing access to the public speaking portion of the meeting. Finally, any votes that are taken this evening, each vote will be taken and conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you, and welcome to the planning board session for this evening. It being sometime past 7:30 PM, we have a continued public hearing for special permit construction of a mixed-use project, retail slash commercial and residential units, 6 to 8 Centennial Street and 31 to 35 South Street and 37 to 39 South Street from the Winterton Corporation. Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and with me this evening is Joe Lynch, who is the applicant, and also with us remotely is Ken Hysak, who is the architect for the project. So, just as a very quick refresher, we have been before the board several times, specifically on January 23rd and on February 27th, where we had public hearings and received input not just from neighbors, but from the town's professional staff, from the board members, and from the town's consultant BSC Group. As a result of those meetings, we've made modifications to the plans, which you saw at the February meeting, February 23rd, and at that point, we'd had a sign-off from BSC Group, who is your consultant for the engineering pieces of the pie. I think at the end of that meeting, I think it would be fair to say, going back to look at my notes, was there was really one issue left, which was the look of the buildings. And so, subsequent to that meeting, the board put together a subcommittee of several members who, and Mr. Lynch and Ken Hysak went out and took the data or took the input we received from neighbors and from members and modified the drawings, which I've actually put in front of you now. You have hard copies, I know you've seen them probably before. And so, what we think tonight, what we do is have you look at them, have Joe and Ken talk about them, and receive any other input you would like to give us, and hopefully move on. So, perhaps our next meeting, we could close the public hearing and ask the board to take a vote. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ken, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman?
Please do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Great. Again, as Bill had spoke about in the introduction, based on the previous planning board meeting and comments, we have made significant changes really to the look of the building, to both buildings. Building A, which is the more prominent building on the common-
Can you speak up, Ken?
Sure, let me get off and turn up the volume.
I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing you.
How is that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, all right, let me see if I can adjust the volume a little bit.
It was good.
Bear with me a minute. And I'll try to speak as loudly as possible. Hopefully, you can hear me.
That's fine, that's better.
Okay. So, starting again with Building A, the footprint is, for all intents and purposes, the same as it was before, except for one slight change. There was, at the front facade, the front elevation shows that the building was originally stepped back a portion, the center bay of the building, we have made that flush now, so the building is flush against the street. Really, the biggest change is the look of the building. The concern that the board and members of the public have expressed is that the building was too contemporary, too, not keeping with kind of the image of what Foxborough wanted to be. So, taking that cue and really creating more of a traditional-looking building. We have revised the window layout so it's in more of a rhythmic pattern, double-hung windows on the upper floors and then storefront below, all sort of aligning up. The roof of the building, instead of it being a flat cornice building, we've added a, an architectural shingled hip roof with brick detailing, emulate chimneys, and really just trying to soften the building, make it seem a little more, a little less bold structure. We stole again, the first floor stole houses, the residential, the commercial, retail shop in the upper floors, the apartments. Going around to the next elevation, the side elevation, you can flip to the next one, yeah, thank you. Again, that front, we've created really the vision of a front bed, which is a brick and hip roofed structure. Beyond that, the building, a flat-roofed building in Clabberd, still a soft material painted Clabberd, painted gray, with the double-hung windows and then Juliet balconies. And that vision continues around the rear of the building, and again, Bill, if you can flip to the next panel. Okay, this one here, again, this is facing, this is the, if you're looking at the front elevation, the right side, again, that first bay being brick, and then the lower portion along the edge that's within five feet of the property line, that is brick. And instead of having the change here, instead of having roof decks along this side, we created a shingled roof, and again, to just try to soften up the building, add a little more detail and elements to it. Moving on, again, the last elevation, that's the rear elevation, not much has changed there. Again, this is still Clabberd sided, and then this has the entrance into the parking garage on the lower level. You've got, again, we're at 36 foot six to the top of the roof of the rear portion. This is slightly lower than what was originally proposed. We've actually shrunk the building height, the floor-to-floor height from the first to the second floor. Again, this is to try to, like, make the building less massive, with the fact we're adding a hip roof on the front. Phil, if you can scroll down to the next sheet. Again, this building, Building B, the footprint building is, for all intents and purposes, the same, the same elements of the commercial portion on the left-hand side of the, what we're calling the front elevation, on the first floor still exists. The rest of the building on the first floor, plus the upper two stories, are still apartment buildings, the square footage is the same. But what we've tried to do is, again, to change the look of the building and keep it more, keeping with some of the other residential buildings in the neighborhood. Again, we've added a pitched roof, a shingled roof, we've added more decorative cornices and gable ends, and a series of small features on the building, to give it a little bit more of a residential feel. The building has nothing but, it's all Clabberd siding and trimmed, and other than that, really the biggest, really the biggest change, some of the elements of the bays with, which have the gable end roofs, they've been pulled out slightly and rearranged slightly to what the previous scheme had. We've, the, again, the cupolas, the thought here that really we want to keep the height of the building down, adding the cupolas on top of the pitched roof, which just, in my mind, seemed to be a little too bold to, the height too extreme. I know this drawing doesn't show it, but the, from the first floor at the lower end of the building to the top of it, it's 43 foot 10 inches total. The floor-to-floor height, again, this building too, we did the same thing, the first, the first, the second floor, we squeezed that down slightly by about a foot. Again, we can scroll through, Bill, the rest of the elevations. And we've tried to soften the look of the building, it'll be a little bit more in keeping with some of the other residential buildings in the neighborhood.
Ken, may I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
On, on all of the elevations, you know, there's, you have, we have the windows, and then either to the left or the right of the windows, there are these small little squares. Are they vents? What are those? Just-
Oh, I started to look at how we're going to heat and cool this.
Yeah.
And then likely, we're going to have to have some sort of, you know, the units are going to be dispersed units, not a huge central cooling plant.
Right.
So, it'll have to be some sort of grill for intake air and exhaust air.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Again, it hasn't been, it hasn't been engineered, I'm just trying to look at, okay, looking at the units and where something, a unit would be placed and how it would, I'd want to show it on the, on the elevation because it is going to be there.
Okay, thank you.
And again, just scrolling through, yeah, that, the change in appearance, again, has been wrapped around all four sides of the building, fairly consistent.
Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Buckley?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynch, anything?
No, I think, you know, we, we had a meeting with the subcommittee, we talked about different ideas, there was a lot of tossing around of ideas, and I think Ken was able to pull together most of that, and so, I'm hopeful that this plan meets some of the design criteria that the board and the public has been looking for.
Any comments, questions from any of the board members this time? Yes, please, Mr. Peterson. Ken, I know that these drawings aren't super detailed, but on this, we're looking right now, I'm not sure whether you're viewing this as well, but the front elevation of Building A, are there provisions for water runoff on that hip roof, particularly over the sidewalk area facing the common?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to have some sort of guttering system, whether it runs down and then ties into the drainage below.
Okay.
We haven't, you know, again, I haven't really looked at it, but I'm thinking, again, especially with a roof like this, we're not going to just spill it off onto the sidewalk.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
Want me to read this in?
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to read this in?
What is it?
It was in our packets, it's a letter that was at, we were at, an email to be read into the record.
Sure, you're welcome to read it.
Okay, I didn't know if you saw it. This was an email that was received to Paige Duncan from Heather Harding yesterday, June 10th. Dear Paige, I understand that the meeting on June 11th will not involve participation due to the coronavirus, therefore, I would like to request this email be read into the record at the meeting regarding the Kingswood Commons project. I would like to thank you, Gabby, Joe Lynch, Ron Bressi, and Jeff Peterson for your work on this. It was nice to see a developer who was willing to change the design of his project in response to feedback from the citizens. It is refreshing to see the above-named board members, as well as yourself, work together with that developer to come up with a design the people will almost certainly prefer over the first design, a design that is compatible with the scale character and architecture of the town's historic and small-town rural patterns, to cite the town's master plan. While informal and clearly not scientific, a poll was conducted using Mr. Lynch's original design and a classic New England-type design found online. 427 of us responded to that poll. For purposes of comparison, 487 people responded to the Foxborough residents survey conducted by the town for the master plan. Of the 427 responses, 317 were votes for the traditional New England-style building, 94 percent, 21 were votes for Mr. Lynch's original design, 6 percent, and 89 were miscellaneous comments. So often, it does, it seems that citizens' voices are not heard, and it is wonderful to see that that was not the case in this instance. I just wanted to send along my sincere thanks to those involved. Take care, Heather Harding.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Wait, do you have something you want to say, Paige?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, we did get a letter today from Maureen Kraus from the Design Review Board. I had sent this to them more indicating that they probably don't need to revote this just because they're an advisory to the planning board, their vote isn't binding, and the fact is, is they did a great job first time around, but after the last meeting, as referenced by Mr. Buckley, the, this group, and after, in light of the input from the public, decided to regroup. And so, but we did send them as a courtesy, the plan's over. So, here's a comment from Maureen Kraus. It's actually directed to Bob Capizzi, but I'm going to bring up the salient points just because I think we'd like to hear the answers. She said, basically, she thinks it's a big improvement, and thanks, that's for sending out the changes. Her only comments related to materials at this point, so Ken, these are probably from you. Building A, the plan states brick veneer. Can you describe the brick veneer? How thick is it, and is it possible for us to see a sample?
Well, the brick is three and five-eighths inch thick, a standard brick. It's brick veneer on the, the building is a wood frame structure, and then there would be insulation in the cavity, and the exterior would be solid brick. I don't have samples yet, we haven't selected a sample, you know, at some point, we will, it will be a reddish-brown standard brick, but I can't give you a sample because we haven't selected one yet.
So, I think, when I hear veneer, I think of like that, like, one-inch-thick stuff you glue onto the front of the surface.
No, we're, it's-
Okay, good.
It's not thin brick.
Great, so I think that probably-
Brick veneer is, it's not, it's not a full wall of brick, you know, three brick-thick, it's a standard brick with a wood stud backup, which is a pretty common method of constructing.
Okay. I have, I'm projecting my own concerns under what I think she was asking, but I think, you know, I was just envisioning something not as-
No, it's not thin brick, it's not a, you know, a-
It's master-
Great.
Cluster that's made to look like brick.
Great. And then the next question is, other, other places state Clabberd siding. The pictures look nice, but what is the specific material? Can it be painted and can we see a sample?
Okay, again, we haven't picked out colors, but Clabberd siding, more than likely, we would use fiberglass siding, a composite siding, so that it's going to wear better than standard wood. It's, it's partially wood, it's, again, it's a composite, it can be painted and will be painted.
Great.
To a point, we can, we can develop samples, but again, it's, it's not vinyl, it's, again, a composite material, it's Clabberd siding, it appears as-
As wood.
It looks like wood, but it's made out of other materials.
So, if I can ask, so what, from a painting and an upkeep standpoint?
It's probably, usually we-
It's better than wood.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ken.
I'm sorry, it's, it's better than wood, it's more stable than wood. It takes paint like wood. It will last for a long time, you know? A new building painted will last a while, and this, and this material will last just as long, if not longer. Again, because it's more stable, it's less subject to rotting and peeling and warping.
And I guess my questions are coming from the, the condition of the buildings that are- And I guess my questions are coming from the condition of the buildings that are there currently? I don't want to see this building start to look like those buildings. So when you say it'll, it'll be in good condition for a while, what is a while?
It still has to be repainted periodically, like regular siding. You'll see 20 to 30 years, depending on what's out of an application they use.
Ken, is it, is it fair to say that it would be like a hardy plank material?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's a, that's a trade name for, for a.
Tracy, to give you an example, that's what Greg Spear builds, his house is usually out of.
Okay.
A hardy plank. So it's quality material, and what he tells me is it's 15 years between paintings.
I'm on 20 years from the original application.
You're on 20.
It still looks perfect.
Wow, thank you.
And I do have one more comment, and I just want to give some context, because Gabby and I can attest to this, where Maureen's coming from, and I think perhaps if Joe, when the time comes, the reason for the samples, and again, is not so much to be nitpicky as to like, we don't know better than an architect, but we went up to Beverly to see their main street, and they had just built this beautiful building, brand-new, made to look old, and had character, looked great, but when we looked at it, there was something off, it was like something flat, and the planner there explained to us that it was like the depths and the reveals were just not quite right, so everything you looked at, there was like just not really a great amount of detail, I don't know if you can describe it better, Gabby, but it was, something was off, so I think that's the main point, we want to make, for such a beautiful building and all this treatment, and I have no reason to believe with Joe's product that it would be anything but, you just want to make sure that it's not like fake-looking old, that it's actually got the character and the quality, so.
So as Ken said, you know, even though hardy happens to be a brand name, products of that ilk have texture to them, they look like they're wood-grained, but they don't have the issue that just regular clavert siding would have. They don't, they don't swell and then shrink and, you know, and check, and they, they're a composite that's sort of concrete-based with other materials, so I don't think you'd have that same problem.
Well, this wasn't even so much of materials, I don't think it was a quality material, because I think the building looked lovely, it was more like.
The size of the reveal.
Yeah, it was more like, there was only like a half an inch where maybe an inch or two would have, so your whole, when you looked at it, just looks, something wasn't right, so, yeah.
Are you talking, are you talking about in the brick itself, that the joints between the brick, or?
It wasn't even brick, it wasn't even brick, it was just a very telling, it was, just went to show how important it is to pay attention to detail, so that's all. I don't think, we're not at that level, but that's why it matters. And then lastly, Maureen Kraus asked about the architectural shingles, I assume you haven't picked those out, and what is, what does that mean, she says?
Well, it's a, it's a tickle that's not just, it's typically, an architectural shingle refers to a shingle that's not a flat, three-tab, basic shingle, it has some depth to it in how it's put together. They last for, you know, you can get 30-year, 40-year shingles, so it's going to last, again, for a long time.
Great, that's all, that was on her request.
Any other questions, comments at this time?
I think it's a big improvement. I think it's a big improvement as well.
So, Ken? I mean, I would say, I would say that your team did a good job in listening and trying to, you know, hearing what both the board and members of the public and the Design Review Committee were getting at, and that now, this, in my mind, is much more in keeping with what I was saying that night, which is, it's on the 50-yard line, it's right at the common, and people are going to see it, and it fits in, and, you know, for my money, I think it's a big improvement.
Thank you.
Are there any, any comments or questions from the public on Zoom or anything else? No?
No. So I would suggest, we did talk about maybe not closing the hearing tonight, I know Bill has some more work to do to bring the plans up, so perhaps if you just, we could let the public know that, you know, maybe if they're not comfortable with this platform, they can always send an email, a snail mail, there's a Dropbox right here at Town Hall, so any form of communication could still be accepted, much like Heather Harding sent it prior to the meeting, you know, and then this will be continued, so there is an opportunity still to comment.
And just to clarify, that the abutters are not notified again?
They are not. We did, just so everybody knows, we did send out a notification to all the abutters for this, actually, we don't call them abutters anymore, we call them parties of interest, but we did notify them of the specifics of this meeting, just because it had been so long and we didn't want, you know, we weren't sure how the best do it, so we figured over-notification was important, so they were informed about this process and their ability to participate via Zoom.
But there will not be any more notices sent to the parties of interest? Just want to clarify that for anyone watching or listening.
We will continue it now to a date and time certain, and if it is a Zoom meeting again, the same process would happen, we would post it through the agenda, and they could get on that way.
Okay. Do you want a motion?
No.
To continue? Do we have a date or to be determined?
No, it'll be.
July 23rd.
July 23rd. Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the special permit at Centennial Street, South Street, South Street by the Winterton Corporation to July?
23rd.
23rd at?
You want to be the part number first, Ken?
Yeah. At 7:35.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
It being some time past 7:45 PM, we have a continued public hearing site plan review, 85 East Belcher Road, Advanced Engineering PC, on behalf of Media One of Ohio Incorporated.
They've requested a continuance to July 23rd, including COVID, they haven't been able to go before conservation, conservation didn't meet for three months, and they met June 1st, and Mr. Adams wasn't available, he had a conflict with another Zoom meeting, so they are not meeting again until the 29th, because they lost their 15th because of town meeting, so this is.
June, meaning June 29th?
Yeah, June 29th, because the next time they're meeting.
Yeah.
So, and since we're not meeting beginning of July, this would go to the next meeting, so July 23rd.
Make a motion to continue the public.
And you can give them 7:45.
Hearing for the site plan review, 85 East Belcher, Advanced Engineering Group, to July 23rd at 7:45 PM.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And wait, cap, cap. Thank you. And, yeah, we got a minute.
Could I just pose a question? Who are the people who are eligible to vote on the downtown project, Joe Lynch's, Joe Lynch's project?
I am not. So I think it's the five of you.
Okay.
You are, John.
No pressure.
That was a big, that was a big change.
I don't know what this is.
Bank of America.
Oh, they're Bank of America, yeah. Yes. Well, no, no, it's not to make money, they're just trying to be good corporate citizens of it, but electrical charging stations. Yeah, I think so. Think so? We'll find out. So it being approximately 8:00 PM, we have another public hearing, site plan review, installation of four electrical vehicle charging stations at 16 School Street from Electrify America LLC. Is there anyone attending?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have Lauren Sweeney on the line, and she can make the presentation on behalf of the applicant. Lauren, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Speak up.
Can you hear me a little bit better?
Yes.
That's great.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just speak up. So I will, do you all have the plans in front of you?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just speak from that, I'm on the seventh page of the site plan, where you can see we're proposing four electric vehicle charging stations in the existing Bank of America parking lot, and then we are also proposing the equipment that goes along with these charging stations, which include a transformer, which is the furthest to the left, and then an equipment enclosure, so it's a trex fence equipment enclosure, and then inside are some power cabinets and a switchgear.
Lauren, can you just tell me, each page has a, has a black dot, a white dot and a black square, can you tell me what page you're on?
C3.
C3? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
So furthest to the left is the transformer, and then as you're moving to the right, you have the power cabinets, the, that are in a trex fence enclosure, and then you hit the four proposed charging stations. And so when you pull into the space, the power cabinet will either be on your left or the right, and those power cabinets are located in the parking lot right now. Those concrete, 2.67 feet refuge areas, that's where the power cabinets themselves are. So we're converting 11 existing spaces to four proposed charging spaces.
Okay.
What does that do to? Can we ask questions, Ken? What does that do from a, what is the parking requirement for that business, and what does that do, how does that number compare to what it's going to take them down to?
Do you have the answer to that, Paige?
I know they have ample parking, but Lauren, do you know the parking breakdown?
I believe that we discussed that the parking was not an issue, I'd have to go back through and look at my notes. But it was discussed that parking, that this would not interfere with the overall parking count on the site, that we would still be within code.
Just because I have trouble sometimes acclimating, where's the, on C3, where should I envision the building?
So if you actually go two sheets back to C1, you can see where the building is, but we are in the entrance adjacent to Market Street.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, right there, yeah.
Who do you, who do you propose is going to be using these charging stations?
So these charging stations can be used by all electric vehicles. I noticed that you were talking about, about, they are pay-for-use, it's about a dollar a minute, so it's relatively nominal, and then these are what are considered high-speed charging stations, so they can charge a vehicle in, from no power to full in about 15 to 20 minutes, depending on how much power your, your car can handle.
A question, and I don't have an electric vehicle, but four seems like an awfully high number. I mean, what, was there, was there a study done that said that was like the needed amount here?
So the intention here is to build charging stations for the future, this actually came, Electrify America was born out of the consent decree from Volkswagen with the clean diesel issues they had a few years back, so the funding to build these charging stations is, that's where this has come from. So we're trying to create infrastructure to allow electric vehicle charging stations to, and electric vehicles to, you know, be as convenient as regular combustion engine cars today. So, you know, as soon as they're online, are they going to be full at the time? Probably not, but hopefully in the next few years, as EV vehicles become more popular, you will see these stations full.
Does Electrify America own them?
Yes, there is a ground lease between Electrify America and Bank of America.
Is Bank of America doing this at other locations?
May I ask, Lauren, with respect to sound, I would imagine, like, I'm sitting next to a couple of computers right now, and every so often, they start humming, and I, you know, it, while it's quote-unquote quiet, it also is, makes it harder for me to hear what's going on, and is disruptive, so we do have some residential abutters nearby, and actually, in the location, it's kind of the closest point to them, unfortunately, with that cabinet. What is the level of hum or sound, or does it cycle off and on, and what kind of sound attenuation have you had to do in other residential areas, if any?
So the trex fence does help dampen some of the sound, but the sound is no more than any other sort of electric equipment that would be on any commercial site, but we can also provide some more data on that if, if the board wishes.
Please.
Good question, I'd like to get more data on that, because this is not a normal commercial site.
Right, yeah.
The, I mean, is this aesthetically pleasing-looking, or is?
No, have you seen the one over at the 99? They're pretty innocuous, generally, I can't speak for Electrify Americas, but generally speaking, they're rather innocuous, it's a pylon with a little electrical charging thing that you plug into your car.
But what about, like, I know.
Parking meter.
I know what those look like, but I'm talking about the station. What, I mean, what is that?
Like the big cabinet, and like, what does it look like?
Yeah.
And C5.
C5.
So are you, so C5 has the section view of what we're trying to show, so the trex fence, that's a composite wood material, so very similar to what you would see in a high-quality residential deck, that is similar to what this material is.
Okay, no, that was helpful, thank you.
So it'll all be hidden by a fence, basically, a gate, is that what we're seeing? Everything's enclosed?
Yes, everything is enclosed.
Is this considered high voltage inside that fenced-in area?
It is, but we meet all electrical code requirements.
Are we going to end up seeing signs on the exterior saying caution, high voltage, like you see at a power transfer station or something?
Well, it's, it's about 200 watts, so it's not, it's not high voltage to require any of those signs, so what you see here is what will be built, there will not be any additional signage.
Gabby or Paige, has Bill Casper looked at this, weighed in at all?
Did he? Or was that when Nick was still here, when this all?
I think I forwarded it a couple of weeks ago, so it was under, it was under. I'm not sure if you have any comments in the, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if you have any comments in the folder.
I would like to have Bill either say he has no comments or share any concerns or questions he may have.
Let's just see, hold on one second. Mr. Worthley from the Water Department says it'd be good just to make sure there are no existing water utilities under the proposed electrical equipment.
Which we did a full survey of the, of the site area, so that shouldn't be an issue.
No comments from the Police Department. How do, how do people pay for it? Do they just put their credit card into the machine?
Correct, so you put your credit card into the machine, just like you would a normal gas station. There's a pin pad on the face of the dispenser.
Got it. And your power coming into the site is overhead?
Underground.
Underground, okay.
How are these, how are these regulator, how are they, oh, how are they certified to be safe for this type of, what kind of organization certifies their safety?
I have never had that question before, that's another thing I can.
It's like appliances are all have a rating approved by some safety board or for appliances and such.
Yeah, we can send you the spec sheets on these dispensers, so you can, you can see that information.
So Lauren, as you recall, when we spoke months ago about this, I was trying very hard to get, work with Bank of America to entice them to allow the public to use their parking lot, especially after business hours. You know, we've, we understand that a lot of businesses don't want to expressly allow it, but a lot of times, it's a don't ask, don't tell, as long as they're not being interfered during regular operating hours, they don't mind, you know, the folks in the neighborhood using it, because we're going, we do, have dining options coming up. Recently, Bank of America posted their signs, not, well, I guess not recently, six months or so ago, you know, making it clear that only bank businesses allowed to park there, which is, you know, as the downtown, or the uptown economic development person, that's somewhat aggressively negative to me. I know you were going to try to work with them, should I assume you had no luck in convincing them to let us use their parking after hours?
That, that's true, we had no luck, they're concerned about security and people parking in their lot, and how that affects. in their lot and how that affects the security of the bank.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's atypical from a financial institution, but I, because of the security. What about, does TD?
TD allows it.
Well?
So, yeah.
So--
It's, it's, I think Bank of America, I will say, has a reputation. I know in Franklin, they're not community friendly, so, just so people are aware of that. You know, it's, it's helpful to have all these businesses, you know, like even Rockland Trust, you know, while they don't expressly give permission, you know, because they don't own the land, they don't cause any trouble about it. So it is a shame that an uptown business doesn't want to work with the community. And I know it's not Lauren's fault, but again, they have ample parking.
Yes, Paige, and I, I did express that, that, you know, we don't need signs that say specifically you can park here, but just to remove those signs and--
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for trying. It was worth the effort because we really are building something great uptown and, and, you know, it'd be nice if they were part of it.
So Lauren, are there hours of restriction for when, can, you know, can you go there, you know, with, you know, at 10 o'clock at night and charge your car?
You can. So I guess these would be an exception to the rest of Bank of America's rules. Fees are open and free to the public 24 hours.
Free, as long as you're charged. So you could plug in--
As long as you're charging, yes, yes. Or you will be charged when you're there if you're, you know, not charging, so.
That's why I call it a charging station.
So I assume this is a moneymaker for Bank of America?
No, it is for Electrify America. They have a ground lease with Bank of America. So they're a separate business from Bank of America.
Right, but Bank of America is netting the lease. I mean, they're obviously--
They are, they are netting money.
Financial benefit.
Either an annual or a monthly fee in exchange for providing the land.
Yes.
Kevin, I have a few questions.
Please, John.
We talked a little bit about zoning as it relates to parking, and I think there should be some sort of statement relative to zoning compliance issues on the site plan, or at least a report from the Building Commissioner. As it relates to parking, the, the second zoning-related issue would be dimensional zoning requirements. For, for the recharges, for the electrical equipment, is there a zoning requirement specified within zoning that both of those facilities have to be certain distances off the property line? I don't think we, we see any answers to that on the, on the site plan, and perhaps it could be something as easy as, as a report from a Building Commissioner that, that what he interprets to be the side yard requirements, because I would call them next to a side yard, that they are in fact met. I'm assuming that the electrical equipment, that be the transformer and the electrical cabinets are in waterproof enclosures. So do you intend to, to help us out a little bit with stormwater runoff, to perhaps place these on a bed of crushed stone to get a little bit of recharge in, as it relates to stormwater? And you can answer these one at a time, or you can take them all in all at once. One of, of the board members had brought up the issue of, of acoustical issues. Are there any acoustical standards established for the, for the equipment? And would, would this, is, how much of a rise would there be in the ambient levels due to any kind of additional noise from the equipment? This may be something that could be handled by an acoustical engineer in a, in a brief letter. It seems to me it would be acoustical 101. And lastly, I think Paige brought up the issue about shared parking, and I think that would be worth revisit at the right time with your client. And sometimes the right time is, this can really seal the deal. I've sat on the other side of this table for 40 years, and sometimes that's been laid out to me. We could use a little help downtown. So, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments on this particular--
And, and just, just to add to John for one second about, is there any additional lighting there? If people are going to use them in the evening hours, just so they feel safe that they're pulling their car into a place and they're going to, you know, charge up.
We can add a sight light.
So you had no lighting proposed, but you--
We, yeah, there's no lighting proposed right now, but, but we can go ahead and add a sight light. That's not an issue.
If you do, make sure there's, you provide information on spillover.
Yeah, make sure it's shielded.
Yeah, and shielded and--
Shielded and pointed in the right direction.
I'm sorry, feel free to answer John's questions if you don't mind.
Um, yes, so I tried to write them down as fast as I could. So we will provide spec sheets for the equipment, as I've previously discussed, that will talk about everything related to sound. All this equipment is waterproof. Of course, you know, I wouldn't want it sitting in standing water, which we're not in a floodplain or anything like that, so that's not an issue. But it's, it's waterproof. And actually, we're helping stormwater here a little bit because we are technically reducing the impervious cover of this area overall, because right now it's, it, that whole line is parking. So we're increasing green space. Normally, we recommend mulch as the ground cover in, in the areas that we're disturbing.
So would you, you would take the pavement out then, assumably? You would, you would have a cut pavement line and you'd remove the pavement?
Yes.
And then you--
Yes, if you look at the plans, you can see where we are proposing new curb, and then there's the concrete pad for the transformer and the concrete pad for the equipment. And then the rest will be new pervious surface.
So it, it would by default become impervious, so there is a slight reduction in the pervious surfaces. What about the idea of having stone in there versus mulch?
Um, we can discuss that with--
Stone may be less maintenance prone.
Oh, and I think it's also better from washing away everything.
Yeah, right. But I mean, that's, you know, I'm, I'm not going to try to be a nitpicker about impervious surfaces, but, and, and this is a minimal area, but everything we can do to reduce rates of runoff and to promote recharge is a, is a good thing.
No, yes, I understand that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, this application, this, this plan came to us while Mr. Riccio was the Building Commissioner. We have had since a change in Building Commissioners. The, so, so we've had this plan for a long time. Because of the, of the pandemic, it's been sitting, you know, on our desks. And Ms. Sweeney has been very kind and gracious about this, so I just wanted to thank her for taking the time, giving us the time necessary to go through this.
And what was--
No worries.
What was Nick's opinion?
Um, he, he didn't have a problem.
Did he, I don't know if he reviewed the plan. It was more, I think he was more involved in the concept of the use. I don't, I don't know that he ever saw the plan. He, I don't know. I can't remember when it came in, when he, because he left in what, February or March?
Yeah, I, I believe that, that the, the plans were forwarded from him.
Oh.
So.
I think the, you know, the comments that are brought up about zoning should be a quick read through the zoning bylaws to see if anything is mentioned. You know, I think it's rare that there's a specific dimension for a transformer, like for a transformer pad. I think it's common sense where you try to place it, as opposed to it must be at least five feet off the property line or at least three feet off the property line, but it's worth a check and there is no zoning table.
Yeah.
So I, I think, you know, at least the, the points that I brought up, and there were five different points, is not an overburdening task to, to come up with answers for. And if, and if there's some things that are just left silent, why don't you talk through Paige and Gabby and to the board members who may want to become involved in things that are left silent, so it can move along.
I have a question on the sound issue, because Lauren's mentioning she's going to send spec sheets and whatnot. And I would hate to go a month and then, you know, have her submit spec sheets and then have us say, well, we still want more. So do you think, John, or anybody, do you think spec sheets alone are going to be sufficient? Or how, will that mean anything to this board, getting a spec sheet? Or how, what will make you feel comfortable on the sound in the, in that neighborhood?
If the spec sheet has a specific dB level, we can all understand--
Yeah, it's kind of like a light spillage thing.
Okay, just making sure. I just didn't want to get to the point in a month where we're now, we need to bring in the acoustical engineer and then, you know, take longer.
I would like Casper to weigh in on it. Bill Casper, our new interim building inspector, and then--
I mean, all the sites I've been on, when we've had transformer pads and electrical equipment, it's, it's, it's simply a hum, and it really doesn't bring the ambient level up to, it doesn't exceed the ambient level to such an extent that it doesn't meet acoustical standards under state codes. That's the usual.
You know, and you know, when you pull up to the parking area where you parked this evening on the side there, you can hear those sometimes. When you pull up, it's, and that's exactly what John's saying. It's just like a, it's not--
It's a white noise.
Why you hear this thing right now?
Low white noise.
We could, we could address that in conditions of approval, that after, after the fact when the equipment is in, if it doesn't meet acoustical standards, that the applicant is obligated to remedy it, because it, you already have a, a weather enclosure on it. Can't the weather enclosure easily be adapted to be a weather enclosure and a sound enclosure? Because that's commonly how you solve acoustical problems.
Yeah, but it, it sounds like we're not going to have acoustical problems, but we need that, that spec sheet. I also, I agree with John on the zoning, verifying that this is all within zoning.
If I'm not mistaken, the other side of that property line is that building that's proposed to come down, correct?
Other side, Gary.
It's the other side?
It's the other side. That's against the residents.
I thought this was against the housing authority.
No, it is.
Yes.
Well, it is, but it's-- Right, that's the building that's going to come down and turn into a parking lot.
For Lynch, right?
No.
No.
King. Okay, sorry.
Do you have any other locations nearby similar to this that we can go check?
Charging stations?
Charging stations.
Lauren, do you have any similar that they can go check out?
Yes, hold on one second. I'm going to their, their website and pulling up the existing stations.
Are there any others in town besides maybe Walgreens has one?
Does Lauren, Lauren, do you work for Electrify America or Bank of America or?
No, I work for Kimley Horn, an engineering firm.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so there's some existing Electrify America charging stations in Baintry, Massachusetts, and in Northborough, Massachusetts.
Do you have an address for Baintry?
Um, it's at the South Shore Plaza, 250 Granite Street.
Site visit. Not yet, not anymore. Simon's opened their malls.
Hey, TJ Maxx is now open, okay?
There was a line, I heard.
200 people. 200 people waiting to get in.
So let's just, Lauren, you want to, so I have in my notes that we're going, we're looking for information on acoustical specs, zoning and parking standards, whether we need a sign off from Bill Casper, but maybe add a parking and zoning table to your plan, a safety spec, and then you're going to look into stone instead of mulch.
And then a light.
And then a light. With a down thing, okay. Anybody have anything else? And unfortunately, we're not meeting for another month.
Um, that's all right. We'll just get these things figured out in the next month. So, no worries.
Okay.
A motion to--
Continue?
Continue. So a motion to continue the--
Hold on, hold on, yeah, I'll say, okay. He has had a question.
Want to ask it?
I was just going to say, in terms of a light, the plan does show a light on that island.
Yes.
I just don't know whether it's directed towards that location or not, so.
Okay, I just missed that.
Yeah, maybe a light's not needed. I mean, if, if we go out there, I mean, go out there soon, we could even see, there might be sufficient light out there. It's more as needed.
I think there's one on that pole, a little bit.
All right. Just, just, I just wanted to make sure that was for safety reasons, if someone's there at night, I would be-- So you make a motion?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing, site plan review, installation of four electric vehicle charging stations, 16 School Street, Electrify America LLC, to July 23rd at, at 8:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else we need to discuss this evening?
I'm mad we didn't get one public comment on our Zoom. I wanted to try out our Zoom comments.
I think you should be thrilled.
I have plenty of work calls. It's Teams, not Zoom, but you're more than welcome to attend.
But Gabby and I were at the ready for all the public comments.
Well, I only have one question. On those calls, do you have to turn off your screen and eat, or just--
I turn off my screen and eat.
Sushi, ice cream, you name it. Tracy's eaten it.
Sorry. I run a lot. I burn a lot of calories. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Weber.
Mike Weber.
And Beanie.